We humbly ask you for your help, for your guidance in identifying the problems that we can rectify in this community. Guide us in our efforts to administer the Planning Commission objectives as we recall that we are a government of laws, not just of men. Help us to use our time and energy wisely, not to waste it on insignificant matters that benefit no one. Please bless us to your service. I ask this in your name. Amen.
Please remain standing and join me in honoring our nation's life.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioners Randy Hall.
Here.
Cassandra Harvey.
Here.
Raj Molly.
Here.
Fabian Tarasiano.
Here.
Alex Wheeler.
Here.
Vice Chairman Dan Jacobs.
Here.
Chairman James Voss.
Here.
We have a question.
Welcome back, Mr. Raves, and it's glad to see you back and healthy and joining us this evening. We have some guests here tonight that we don't typically see at Planning Commission meetings. Our City Council member, Marvin Chris, welcome. And Architectural and Design Committee member, Diana Cook, welcome. Now's the time for public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting due to extenuating circumstances, a total of 10 minutes is offered at this time during which input may be given regarding agenda items. Individual speakers would be limited to two minutes each for early speakers. Do we have any early speakers, Mr. Ludicke?
None that have indicated, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any person who then would like to address the Commission on any agendized item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary identifying the agenda item that you'd like to discuss. Each person will be given an opportunity to address the Commission. At such time, the item is discussed by the Commission. Speaker's cards are available at the rear of the chamber as well as here on your right on the table next to Deputy City Attorney, Mr. Adams. First item on our agenda is our consent calendar. It's an approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 20th, 2010. May I have a motion, please?
I move that we minute from a regular meeting from September 20th, 2010.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, corrections? Hearing none, please vote.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item, excuse me, the next items are continued public hearings. The first is tentative parcel map number 66115. This is a request to subdivide acreage into 45 industrial lots in the light industrial zone. So without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter or this is continued, is continued and open again. Could we have a brief staff report on this, Mr. Ludicke?
Okay. Basically.
Ms. Donovan, thank you, I'm sorry.
It's quite all right. Basically, the applicant has returned with modified environmental documents as the Planning Commission requested back in January 19th, 2010 to address the inconsistencies between the report and the issues raised by the California Department of Fish and Game. A revised initial study was prepared and circulated for public review. The project is for 45 industrial lots to be developed in three phases. The project is consistent with the general planned land use designation of light industrial. The subdivision would have access from L4, L8, and Enterprise Parkway via Sierra Highway. With each phase, a major street, Avenue L4, Enterprise Parkway with 1A, with 1B, L8, and a 30-foot wide paved access in Avenue L8 to Sierra Highway. And in Phase Two, Fifth Street, Avenue L4, Fourth Street West, and the remainder of Enterprise Drive would be required to be improved. And with each phase, the interior street improvements would also be provided. Installation of a median in Sierra Highway with each phase of the project is required. A future traffic signal would be provided at the intersection of Avenue L8 and Sierra Highway when the intersection warrants the installation of a signal. The applicant would be conditioned to pay their fair share of the installation of the traffic signal. Mitigation measures have been added to the project and are located within the mitigation monitoring program. There is sufficient access utilities and infrastructures exist or can be extended to serve the project. Therefore, staff is recommending that. The Commission approved tentative parcel map number 66115. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions? All right. Thank you. Do we have speakers on this, Mr. Ludicke?
Yes, I've got one speaker, Mr. Chairman, Mario Grossi.
Yes, welcome, Mr. Grossi.
Hi, I'm Mario Grossi, and I own the 2 and 1/2 acres across the street at the corner of L8 and would be not quite Third Street. And so my question as of before is, and you answered it, it sounds like there's going to be a public access, public access from Sierra Highway back to the, to the, to Fifth Street West? So that means it's going to be paved?
Yes.
Okay. And that's in the first phase?
Mr. Grossi, just please address your comments to the Chair and the Commission.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And we'll ask staff to respond if we.
That's really all I want to know.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Any other speakers on this matter?
I have no other speaker's cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right. The applicant's representative is here. Care to address the Commission on anything, sir?
Chairman Commissioners, my name is Barry Mans. With the Allopali Engineering, I'm here representing the applicant tonight. We have submitted all the revised environmental studies which we were asked to do last time. We felt the studies adequately addressed the concerns of the Fish and Game as well as the Commission on our last meeting. We have reviewed all the conditions as well as the mitigation measures, and we've gone through them with the applicant, and we have no problems with the conditions as set forth. We're here to answer any questions the Commission may have of us.
Thank you, Mr. Mans. And Fish and Game didn't hit you with any last-minute letters like they typically do?
I am unaware that we have received anything from Fish and Game as of this time.
We'll consider this matter and get it off the agenda, then they'll really be late.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other speakers?
Nothing else that I know of.
Thank you very much. So then, without objection, the public hearing is closed, then consider a motion on this
I move that we adopt resolution number 10-45, approving tentative parcel map number 66115.
Second. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next continued public hearing is tentative parcel map 66794, which is a subdivision for four single-family lots in a SRR zone. So without objection, public hearing is open on this item. And anyone, do we have any speakers on this one?
I have no speaker's cards on this, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Does anyone care to hear a staff report on this item? Doesn't appear to be anyone interested in the staff report, then it's appropriate to close the public hearing and consider a motion on this 66794.
I move that we adopt resolution number 10-42, approving tentative parcel map number 66794.
Thank you.
Second, yeah?
Thank you. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. We have new public hearings. The first is conditional use permit number 0519. This is the third time we've heard this item granting a one-year extension for the construction of a self-storage facility on 20th Street West, just north of Avenue K. So without objection, the public hearing is open on this. Does anyone, do we have speaker cards on this?
I do have one from, I believe, the applicant, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then we'll hear a brief staff report.
Chairman Voss and Commissioners, the request is to construct a self-storage facility consisting of four buildings of varying sizes for, in the CPD zone. The project has been heard before. This is the third and final extension available for the project. We modified the attachment to the resolutions to reflect the new resolution number 1023. And that pretty much ends my report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The applicant seen these modifications and has agreed to them? The applicant seen these modifications and has agreed to them?
Yes.
Good, thank you. All right, we'll hear from the speaker then.
Speaker, please. Russell Corey.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you. My name is Russell Corey. I represent the owner of Clock Storage Plaza. We are in acceptance of the conditions that have been imposed. I know this is the third time I've come before you, but it's very difficult right now to obtain any kind of financing for a project like this. We did a little cold calling and found that right now storage facilities in Lancaster are suffering about a 25% vacancy. So it's just not a good market right now for something like this, and we're asking for one more year extension. I'll answer any questions, yeah?
Thank you very much, sir. Any questions? Thank you. All right, then, any other speakers?
Not on this item, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then it's appropriate to close the public hearing and consider a motion on this matter.
We'll make a motion that we grant a one-year extension to October 16th, 2011, based on the findings contained in the staff report and subject to the attached revised conditions list.
Thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. All right, any questions, comments? It's been moved and seconded.
Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item is a new public hearing on conditional use permit number 10-04. This is conditional use permit for the off, for off-site sale and consumption of alcohol type 21 sale of beer and wine only at an existing mini market. And the request is to grant a waiver under section 17 dot 42 dot 040C of the Lancaster Municipal Code to allow the sale of beer and wine within 300 feet of a residential designated So, without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter. This is a matter we've seen before.
Yes, in a slightly different form.
As I recall, it was, we heard it in April.
Yes.
We denied the waiver. It was appealed.
Correct.
And now it's back to us.
Yes.
So you'll give us a thorough staff report, I'm sure, Mr. Ludicke?
I gave you a very written, very thorough written staff report, but for the purposes of the oral presentation, to reiterate, yes, the Planning Commission heard a request on this site for the sale of alcohol. At that time, it included essentially distilled spirits, beer and wine, out of the existing mini-market that is located on the site. As a part of that request, they also requested, the applicant requested, waiver of the normal distance requirements that are contained in the city's alcohol regulations. The Planning Commission, as you noted, denied the request for the waiver and with that the request for the alcohol sales at the site in April. The council heard this on appeal in June of, June 22nd, actually. At that time, they referred it back to both staff and the applicant to do some additional research. As I detailed for you in the staff report, that involved a number of efforts to try and gauge some public opinion on what the, what the neighborhood thought about the sale of alcohol. We attempted to conduct a neighborhood meeting. We were thwarted to some extent by no attendance at that meeting. We also did, however, through the efforts of the applicant and city staff, distribute a survey within the immediate area of the site and also made that available online for people to express their opinions. During the time that this effort was going on, the applicant indicated to the city that he wanted to amend his request, dropping the proposed sale of distilled spirits at the location and amending it to only be a beer and wine request. The city council made aware of that, essentially has referred the matter back to the, to the Commission for some reconsideration, given the fact that when the Commission heard this before, they were hearing it for a full alcohol license. As I've indicated to you in the staff report, there are a number of issues as a, as a Commission that you need to work through on this request, given the requirements of the city's alcohol ordinance. The key issue and probably the one that determines ultimately the fate of this particular request is the waiver situation. The city's alcohol ordinance establishes certain separation distances between certain types of alcohol sellers and what are considered sensitive type uses. One of those sensitive type uses is residential, and as you can see on the, on the aerial photograph, residential essentially is located on three sides of this site, to the west, south, and east. And one of the factors in looking at this is that a mini-market, which is what this facility is, is defined in the alcohol ordinance as a primary seller of alcohol. By definition, that's what it is. And because of that, it has to maintain from residential property normally a 300-foot separation distance. Therefore, because this site does not meet that, the applicant has made that request and in fact made that request to you also when you, when you heard it in April. As we've indicated to you in the staff report, the waiver provision is really in place to act as kind of a safety valve. You know, from, from many years of writing ordinances, you cannot foresee all potential circumstances. And quite often, well-written ordinances have within them some kind of provision that if you make certain findings allows you to deviate to some extent from normal requirements to deal with those unforeseen circumstances. As I've indicated to you in this report, you essentially would have to make a finding for the waiver that there's some specific community need that is met by the granting of alcohol sales at this location and that the granting of those alcohol sales is not likely to cause some adverse effect on the sensitive use that it would normally have to be separated from. I've also outlined for you in the staff report a number of issues and concerns. Some of these are things that staff has noted. Others are issues that have been raised to us by members of the public or in some cases the applicant that I think are valid issues for you to think about. That would include, you know, how easily the site can be accessed from nearby residential, what the Sheriff's Department's opinion was regarding the revised request and their thoughts on it, what the city has done previously in regards to waiver requests, and some examples in town of where you have mini-markets that are located in essentially residential areas that don't sell alcohol, conversely, an example of one that does, and some, you know, legitimate questions as to whether there's really an adverse effect occurring from that. So these are certainly things that you can take into account. I think there may well be other issues, and if you hear testimony, that you should also consider. As I said, this, this requires you to kind of think through the ordinance side of it, try to understand whether the waiver requirements that are in place were meant to deal with a situation such as this, and whether or not, you know, there would be sufficient grounds in your view to grant the waiver, and if so, what kind of restrictions ought to be placed on the use if it were to be approved. I'd be more than happy to answer any specific questions you may have regarding the ordinance or anything I've put into the staff report. And my advice is that you consider the testimony and have a good discussion among yourselves about how you want to proceed on this.
Thank you, Mr. Ludicke. Before we hear any public testimony on this matter, does anyone have any questions of Mr. Ludicke?
Well, I have a question. It's point of order.
Go right ahead.
Do we need to put a motion on the floor to debate this matter?
We would, but it would be appropriate to consider a motion after the applicant offers their testimony, should they choose to, any proponents or opponents of the project, and then we would hear rebuttal from the applicant. We'd close the public hearing and then consider a motion, whether it be to grant the waiver or not, but to have a meaningful discussion and deliberation, it would be appropriate to consider a motion. That's the only way, I know how to do it. That'd be right, Mr. Adams?
Yeah, I completely agree. I wouldn't suggest attempting to debate it prior to the public testimony.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for the point of order.
You satisfied with that, then?
Yes.
All right, very good. Anyone else? All right, then.
Actually, I have a question about the ordinance.
Go right ahead.
Is this the right time to do it?
Oh, please, yeah.
Okay. Mr. Ludicke, does the ordinance apply to bars and restaurants or just the, the types of places that sell alcohol for off-site consumption?
Yes, and actually, it, it applies some different standards depending on the type of seller. A bar, as you have described, would also be considered a primary seller and would be subject to the same type of separation distance requirements that a mini-market would. However, the ordinance does not require that same separation distance for a restaurant, even if it sells alcohol. It doesn't require a separation distance for what it considers to be incidental sellers, off-site sellers of alcohol. That would include a grocery store, a drugstore, something of that type. So there are some differentiations in the ordinance between the types of uses, and the reason for that is quite frankly, the city, as it looks at, you know, its long-term development, believes certain types of uses, despite the fact that they may sell alcohol as an incidental sale, have benefits that override that, and that logic is contained in the ordinance itself.
And I was a little unclear, is there any community feedback? It sounds like there were some attempts at it that kind of fell short. Do we have anything before us that?
Yeah, I can tell you that, that of the roughly 100 and some odd door hangers that went out, we received one back. We received another 18 responses to the online survey. Of those, five people self-identified themselves as being within the, the neighborhood or the area. The others, who didn't state one way or the other, we have no way of telling. The, the general feeling, running at about 70%, was opposition to the sale of alcohol. The, you know, as I said, that's, that's the feedback we got. I, I would hesitate to, you know, from a statistical standpoint, say that 19 responses constitutes a statistically valid, you know, response rate, but that's the information so much as it is.
Thank you.
All right, any further questions from anyone? All right. All right, then, it's appropriate then to open the public hearing on this matter, and for the record, and you did point it out, Mr. Ludicke, we did receive a letter dated October 1st from the applicant, Mr. Cohen, requesting the waiver. And we do have a series of communications clear back from March of this year on this same matter. So, at any rate, I'm assuming Ms. Cohen will be speaking to us this evening. You're, you're welcome to start, and as the applicant, you're not limited to time.
Thank you.
But we would appreciate not repeating over and over, so go right ahead, sir. You're welcome.
Thank you, Chairman Voss. Thank you for your time. I also want to thank the members of the Commission for the time and opportunity, second time, second opportunity. I also want to thank the city of Lancaster, especially Mr. Brian Ludicke, Planning Director, for working diligently on this project. My name is Mike Cohen. I'm a partner in Crosspoint Development LLC, and accompanying me is Mr. Jeff Little. He's been working with us on this project, on this application. I, with your permission, sir, I wanted to distribute the rendition of the project and also a copy of the door hanger that, for you to look at. And with your permission also, I have a survey that we did from our store, from asking the customers to look at the survey, and if they appear to us to be over 21 years of age, then we ask them to respond to the question of, would you be in favor of beer and wine sales in this store? There were two possible answers, yes or no. Yes means in favor, no in opposition. The number of respondents were 1,489. This was unscientific. And the number of people in favor was 1,367. That's 91.8% were in favor. And the number of respondents who were opposing the sale of beer and wine was 122. That's 8.2%. With your permission, I would like to give the.
Do you want to share that with staff, yeah?
Yes, with staff.
We typically prefer to get this stuff well in advance, so we'll have a chance to study it, but.
Yes, sir.
Give us anything you want, anytime, I guess.
I'm sorry?
You can give us anything you want, anytime.
Yeah. Well, we're here to answer any questions or comments or concerns you may have, but before I step back and be seated, I'd like to bring your attention just to the engineering geography of the location. Can I approach the screen?
This is the location of the project, and in the east side is where the.
Mr. Cohen? I think we have a pointer so we can get your testimony on record and then.
Thank you. I was at the customer for 26 years, so I'm used to.
Yeah. We can hear you, but I'm not sure that the microphone can pick it up. We can hear you, but I'm not sure that the microphone can pick it up. Thank you, sir. Go right ahead.
This is the location, and the convenience store is located on the east side. And there is a wall, demising wall here, that separates us from the southern property. And the neighborhood here, there's a wall here, north-south, that starts from here and goes south. There's a wall that starts from north here and goes south, and I... If you draw a straight line to the residents here, we do have them in the 300-foot radius, but if you do a walking distance, I believe that only this resident would be in the 300-foot radius, and the rest, if you want to approach this residence here, you have to go around this area. That's all I have to say, just to bring you up-to-date about the geography of the location. And if you have any questions or comments, I'll be happy to answer you. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Cohen?
Yes, sir.
Well, first of all, I'm surprised that your comments are so brief regarding this matter. It's been before us before. You heard what Mr. Ludiki had said relative to the findings we must make. I would have thought your argument would have addressed those matters, but if you choose not to address them, that's entirely up to you. I'm not going to lead you down the path, but...
Well, I can speak for...
Somebody needs to convince us that this is an appropriate use in this area, since by ordinance, it's not allowed. I mean, it just clearly is not allowed. So you do understand the dilemma that we're in, to reconsider this again, given the limited testimony you've offered us.
Yes. If I'm giving the time, I'd be happy to do that again.
You can take all the time you want.
I can speak for 50 minutes. I always prepare notes for 50 minutes. Anyway, I do have some comments to make in response or in support of the application. During the city council meeting, there were comments, at least one comment, that it would be better to go from general alcohol spirit sale to beer and wine limited, which we have agreed to do that. And also, regarding the city ordinance, Section 1742.040, it establishes a separation distance of 300 feet. A waiver by the Commission is necessary, that's why I'm here. Also, Section 1742.040 of the provision allows for a waiver if the following can be shown: One, service will serve the community need; and two, the service is not expected to create an adverse effect on adjacent property uses or residents. There's already a precedent for this waiver, and this is discussed in the report from the city, and that precedent waiver, distant waiver, was approved, I believe, by the city council on November of '08. So this would not be setting a precedent for this. Regarding item one, saying that the service will serve the community need, there is no data, at least, that suggests that this particular property would be adverse to the area. Again, based on the approximately 1,500, to be exact, 1,489 responses that we got, we believe that it would support the neighborhood, or at least the people who have visited us. Most of them were from the neighborhood. If we have gotten an opposite result, where the majority is against beer and wine, I wouldn't be standing here today. It's bad for business. I wouldn't be filing the application. When we opened the store, a lot of people asked us if we would sell. We said we don't have the license, and they encouraged us to apply for a license. And that's why we were encouraged to do so. Also, there is a report, or at least a comment from the Sheriff's Department, saying that with some restrictions, they would not see anything negative or bad about the location selling beer and wine. Of course, we will listen to any recommendations or suggestions the Commission might have regarding restrictions. We'll be happy to consider that, to discuss that. Other than that, I believe that we have set the stage to support the two requirements for distant waiver. One is that the service will serve the community, and two, the service is not expected to create an adverse effect on the adjacent property. I believe that this probably addresses the concerns that have been raised.
Time will tell.
Yes, sir.
All right, finished with your testimony?
Yes, sir.
All right, so there may be some questions of you, sir.
Sure, I'll be happy to answer them.
I have one.
Go right ahead, Mr. Hall.
Did any of your customers that said that they wanted alcohol sold tell you why?
We did not ask why. We just, when customers asked for an item, we usually make a list, being from chocolate or certain type of sodas, and if we have more than a few asking for the items, because we just opened the store, we wanted to not be ahead of the curve and take risk in buying merchandise that would not sell. We wanted to test the pulse of the community, to see what would sell in a retail environment. So when we were getting enough requests for beer and wine, then alcohol in general, then we realized that we need to serve the community. The first week when we opened, you have no idea how many phone calls I got from the cashiers telling me that a lot of people are asking for alcohol.
Another question is, you said that you have your employees trained, and you caught some adults that were buying tobacco for minors, and can you explain to me what kind of training that your employees would get for if you were able to receive the waiver?
Yes, sir. The manager of our store, he worked for 13 or 14 years for several stations for Arco, and he has a lot of experience in tobacco sale. And when we applied for a tobacco sale, we trained, the manager trained the employees as how to ask for age identification from customers, and many times, at least two times that I've been told, there have been customers who came in and showed their ID, and the clerk realized that there was some young person who was not eligible to buy cigarettes, was outside hiding someplace, and they refused selling to the person who was representing the minor. So they are trained to weed out these types of buyers. You can't be 100% perfect, whether in this location or in other location, but we try to be very diligent, following the laws.
Anyone else?
Yes, I have a question. You stated that more than 1,400 folks had answered a survey.
Yes.
And that you were at more than a 98% yes.
91.8%.
91.8% yes, still a high number. Do you happen to know how many of those yeses were in the surrounding neighborhood?
We have, many of them have chosen to write their addresses and locations, phone numbers, and again, we did not go and count every single one of them and evaluated those. We also realized that sometimes a customer may have signed twice, and we always told them, if you've signed it once, please don't sign it again. But statistically, again, as an engineering professor, former engineering professor, I really don't believe in statistics. However, perhaps the number of people who signed twice supporting it would equal the number of people percentage-wise who signed twice opposing it. And we did not card the people when we asked them, are you over 21? When they said yes, we believed them. So, but usually, when, if they did not look over 21, we did not allow them to sign. But the paper was always down on the counter, and we never pushed it towards them. They either looked at it and they asked questions about it, or the clerk asked, have you seen this? You want to sign this, support this, or oppose it, whatever, you can sign.
So as you also stated, that it was non-scientific, so how much credibility should we give to that, being non-scientific?
I can say it is scientific, unscientific, I'm sorry, but I would give really more credibility to this than to the 19 or 19 surveys we got back through the internet. In the internet, you don't know whether the people are really living in the surrounding neighborhood who are affected by the 500-foot radius, because we did distribute the survey door hangers to the 500-foot radius, although the ordinance limits it to the 300-foot radius. We distributed to 138 residents. And the night that we met here, we publicized, announced the meeting on a certain date, and no one attended the meeting. But we got probably 14 or 15, I'm not sure how many of the 19 opposed it, but statistically, it's not consistent with this. But looking at the number, I would put more weight to this, and I don't want to offend anyone by saying the survey we did was wrong. I think if you wanted to survey the local neighborhood, we did the right thing, but depending on the internet, World Wide Web response, then you really don't know who you're getting the answers from.
Thank you.
Sure.
I just want to be clear about your survey. It's 1,489, right?
Yes.
And all of those were done in your store?
All of them.
Okay. Is there any, I think the question was posed, I'm just not sure what the answer is, is there any indication of how many of those folks actually live in the area that the ordinance was meant to protect?
When I'm opening this, I see address NA not applied, and many, some people decided not to give their address, and some people did. I'm just randomly opening this one, and I see Regency Way, I can see some addresses. I realize this Regency is in the neighborhood, but we do serve significantly in the neighborhood area, so I have to sit down and look at this carefully to give you an idea, but I would say a good number of this would be represented by people living in the neighborhood.
But you don't have anything that tells us how or why?
No.
Anyone else have any questions of the applicant?
Yeah, I do. You talked about a precedent that the city has granted a waiver. How does that precedent apply to you?
I don't know. When I was here last April, I think there was a concern that voting in favor of waiver would set a precedent, and I was not aware until I read the report today that there was a precedent. And the place was also a mini-market, which is resemble our business, and I'm not sure if it was a gas station as well, but the type of business at least resembles our type of business, and...
Can you identify that waiver that was granted? Because I'm certain, I'm not aware that there was ever a waiver granted for a gas station mini-market in this city under this ordinance. Maybe you can enlighten us.
I'm going to read to you what I read at the bottom of page two of the staff report. It says, the last sentence, it says, "The city has approved a waiver request," I'm quoting, "the city has approved a waiver request in the past. The planning commission approved a waiver of distance requirement in November 2008 for the location of the VFW..." You can stop me whenever you want.
It's not a mini-market. Okay, I'm aware of that one.
"...on Division Street, a site that is within both 300 feet of residential property and within 1,000 feet of a school. In this case, the commission felt that the VFW post met a specific community need and that any impact on adjacent uses was expected to be minimal because of the private nature of the facility."
I'm aware of the staff report, but that's not a mini-market. That's a VFW private entity that meets, you know, once a month, or maybe once a week, and might have 15 or 20 members. It was a relocation of a existing facility that the redevelopment agency took, and they found a temporary location in a Misani call, as I recall. So that's not a mini-market. So maybe you have another example. Go ahead.
No, I apologize. I'm not from Lancaster. I didn't know. I thought, when this was address, I thought this was a mini-market, so...
So really, there is no precedent, if you will?
For a mini-market, I sound corrected, but a waiver of 300 foot has been...
All right. Go ahead.
You stated that there's really no data saying that your waiver would cause an adverse effect on the community. But I think what the city is saying by their ordinance, but by definition, this type of business would be a detriment to the community. Is there anything that you feel that you could do to cut down on that adverse effect, or do you believe that there isn't an adverse effect?
If there is, in every business, in every relationship, in every service, you need to work hard. There are some things that needs to be polished up, and I'm sure there will be people who will abuse any rights that they might be given at that location. We do have 16 security cameras there, and we're very vigilant about the security and safety of that location. And again, to the best of my knowledge, I don't believe we've had any issues, safety issues there, since we opened. We know what can transpire from selling beer and wine, and we will be vigilant, that we will follow the law, and if there are any neglects of that, we'll address those legally.
Thanks.
Does your company employ any private security guards for the area?
No, we don't. We didn't feel the need, but it's a very costly project. And we do have, our employees, especially the late-night employees, are very well-trained to deal with these issues, calling 911, calling the police, and addressing those. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have questions?
I'd like to add also, we do have tobacco license, and we do sell petroleum gas, and the rules and regulations that we have to follow are really voluminous, and I think we're doing our homework in making sure that we're serving, we're doing the right thing.
All right. Any other members have any questions of the applicant? I have a few.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In your testimony back in April 19, 2010, you were very prolific in your testimony. We have in our packet tonight on page five of our staff report, the meeting minutes of that meeting, and a copy of your testimony. You pointed out seven items that you felt at the time would be sufficient to grant a waiver. So is it your position tonight that any of that changed, or are you still of the same mind that those items are still important for us to consider?
I just don't see any change in our objective, and there is nothing material that has changed since my last testimony.
You do understand the quandary that this commission is in. We are bound by the city ordinance to consider your waiver application on two points, and two points only, that the establishment establishing and allowing a waiver would serve a specific community... That the establishment establishing and allowing a waiver would serve a specific community need, and the distance waiver is not expected to result in any adverse effect on adjacent property or uses or residences. So you have seven, or solomons supposedly, sitting here that have to decide, based on your testimony as the applicant, what we hear from the public, and then whatever your rebuttal might be, and then ultimately, whatever our decision is based on the waiver, that's appealable with the process you've previously been through. So I think it's the commission's intent tonight to settle the matter. I, for one, don't want to see it back, so I'd like to get it settled, but, you know, I don't make the choices on appeals, so... Anyway, that's just my statements tonight. If, you talked about negotiating conditions, if in fact a waiver was granted, and if a waiver is granted, then the commission must then take up the issue of establishing conditions on this particular project, because it's highly unlikely that the commission would approve a waiver and not place conditions on the project. But you spoke of negotiating.
Yes.
This is not the place to negotiate. What we do is we set conditions. If folks don't like them, then they have a process to appeal. So we may engage you in discussion. For instance, if the waiver was granted, and we established a requirement that only single beverage, no single beverage containers of any kind would be sold in your store, how'd you feel about that?
I absolutely agree with it, and we wouldn't want that.
How about fortified wine and malt liquor? How'd you feel about selling those?
What was the first one?
Fortified wine, malt liquor?
I don't know. If it's hard liquor, we will not sell.
No. This is a quasi-beer and wine product. It's high alcohol content, it's what, it's what some folks would consider a quick jolt.
I was not aware of this, but I would be happy to strictly limit ourselves to regular beer and regular wine.
I'm not sure that answers the question, but I'll leave it at that. At any rate...
The answer would be yes.
Hmm? That's fine, I mean, you can, you know, you'll have a chance to rebut, and I'm sure there's going to be a lot, a lot of experts stand up here tonight and explain to us what I'm trying to explain to you. So why don't we let you go, and then you can listen to the testimony, and then we can hear your rebuttal, unless you have more applicants to talk.
I think, Jeff, did you have something?
May I? Mr. Vosner?
You guys can take all the time you want, Mr. Little.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it. I think that, I think what you're, we're asking the applicant was basically the type of beer and wine that would be distributed, malt liquors, the wine fizzy drinks, those are all the type of drinks that will not be, the applicants are fully aware that a beer and wine 21 license is the one he's crying for. We do understand that it's a concern of the city and everybody else that there would be a problem with singles, malt liquors, the 40s, the large things that are considered to be the, as far as a concern to people loitering in the area that would be by those singles. That, I believe, is, I thought, Mr. Vos, Chairman Vos, is one of the questions that you're asking, I could be wrong, but I do believe that's one of the things that we discussed in full detail, that wouldn't be one of the things that would be distributed. Again, I don't know if Mr. Cohen touched base as far as the peripheral loop, and one of the concerns that, that was one of the reasons why he, the commercial use that is on that corner would be one of the concerns that, or positives that would be acceptable in that area. The area obviously has access. One of the things that we looked at is, when we did this study and survey, and Mr. Ludiki and city staff recommended a few things, is that we had town hall meeting, nobody showed. We did, one of the things that Mike and I had gotten together, Mr. Cohen, was to discuss this list that's been put out, and basically, him and I talked and said, basically, you know, one of the questions we should be asking, do you want it, don't you want it? We tried to get as many addresses as possible. Commissioner Harvey, you made some comment as far as, you know, how many of those, and Commissioner Wheeler, same thing, what percentage, obviously, we didn't take it that one step further. We were trying to get as many addresses and telephone numbers that we could feel. Serving, one of the things that I think should be brought to the commission's concern is the, I think Captain Axel Anderson of the Sheriff's Department spoke at the city council meeting, and basically voices concerns on, yes, sir, one of the concerns that they felt would be possibly a loitering problem, and the singles. If those were mitigated and cut out, he felt that there would not be a problem. So those are all the things that we've taken into consideration. We've looked at this project, we've, with the fencing around it, and again, I apologize to you, Mr. Chairman, as far as not getting that rendition to you ahead of time, and I know the protocol, I apologize. But we do feel with the peripheral loop and the way this is set up, this is one of the reasons why this was set, in my opinion, is to keep the influx going. Obviously, if there's problems on Avenue Y, it's not caused by this particular location, and it's not going to bring that to a head on that part. So we feel that we've, as far as the city directed us to do, as far as the city sent us out to do the mailouts and everything else, we felt we've addressed that situation, so...
Very good. Thank you. Anyone have a question?
I have one question. You mentioned singles, the sheriff's concerns, what if the singles get us loitered?
Yes.
Singles, we discussed, how do we deal with that? What about loitering?
Well, I think it's like anything else, and, you know, and one of the backgrounds that I had for 25 years is being in the mini-market business, and I think even Mr. Jacobs has that, Commissioner Jacobs has that. So looking at the things that we don't want to remember, those are the things that we always addressed, and I think by keeping a place well-lit, well-secured, cameras, well-placard, people in uniform, all deterrence on keeping people loitering. When an establishment opens up, and they look at a place when it first opens, and if you start off on the right foot, you start off that way, and you have to, and whether somebody says it costs money to add more cameras, or whatever it may be, those are things that have to be looked at. And the one thing that we don't want, and I serve on the sheriff's board, is that one of the things that we want is our sheriff's department being called over there morning, noon, and night. So we have more important things to do. I mean, our sheriff's department has more important things to do. So I think that's, you know, this particular corner and the way it's set up and the way it's been presented is, it's going to be a nice corner, and once it's fully developed, and I think, you know, the beer and wine, and if I remember right, a 3,000 square foot, correct me if I'm wrong, 2250, we have 250, 200, yeah, 250 square feet, which is far below what ABC would require, as far as the maximum requirement as far as beer and wine space.
You do understand, and it is clear, that the commission will, if they choose to set standards instead of condition, the size, location, placement, product number, that sort of stuff is all in the purview of the commission, so...
Mr. Chairman, yes.
And just, you know, the products, I recall something, and I wrote down the list of some of the alcoholic beverages that I have seen that give me cause for concern. What's it called? Old English 880, maybe? Would that be one?
That's a malt, yes.
Yeah, or maybe Jose's Jungle Juice, you know that one? Or Max Live, that's a really good one, that's 12% alcohol. If you really want to kick, that's some fine stuff. Magnum, Steel Reserve, Hurricane High Gravity, these are really quality products. Cobra, it's another one, and those are malt liquors and fortified beers and that sort of stuff. The other ones that I've noticed, particularly in some of the poorer, I shouldn't say poor, the less, the more disadvantaged areas of our community where there is a preponderance of liquor stores, you've got this Cisco 18, that's a really great wine product. Wild Irish Rose, Thunderbird, somebody, you know, some of us are old enough to remember that, I know, I don't know about Mr. Little, but I certainly am. Night Train, that's really probably the premier knock-you-on-your-rear-end product, 17.5% alcohol. So those are the kind of products that I personally am not interested in seeing in any establishment, and I will point out those particularly. We can't, we can't limit the product by brand, but we certainly can by type.
I agree, Mr. Chairman, I think those are the, obviously, the conditions that would be set forth would be totally acceptable. Also, too, I think whatever is imposed by the commission would also be a double-edged sword by the ABC, once they put their conditions on top of whatever the city may, or whatever the commission may represent.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Hall?
Mr. Little said that they would have uniform, what did you mean? Because Mr. Cohen said that they wouldn't have security.
Well, the security at this point in time, we're talking about, Mr., Commissioner Hall, I was referring to, yeah, I was referring to all employees being in uniform, fully uniformed, well-tagged and everything else, as far as cameras and everything else. If something is warranted as far as, at that point in time, and it needs to be, then that's something that the applicant would look at as far as security.
All right. Anyone else? Go ahead.
So if security is one of the conditions, that's something that you would consider?
I don't, I don't believe that we would like to see a condition on that, and the reason why, Commissioner Wheeler, is that one of the things that we look at, because we don't, we don't anticipate, we're going to fully, you know, do this project and do this, and hopefully, that security's not needed. Obviously, I do know in the past, on units that I've owned in the past, that in outlying areas, not within the city limits, so forth, there has been reason for security, and not so much, not so much because of beer and wine, it's for panhandling than anything else, you know, so that's where the securities come in. So we don't anticipate we're going to need security. We feel that the project itself is going to, we're going to, we're going to police it ourselves, and if, and at that point in time, if we need to come back, or whatever condition the commission may put on us to come back on a temporary basis, we'd look at it.
Do you know how much it would cost? Have you done an analysis?
I know that in cases that I can say, two, three years ago, it was costing in excess for four to five hours a night, usually going six days a week, was costing in excess of $4,500.
For...
A month, a month, yes.
For one guard, or multiple?
One guard. And then it, if it depends on if you're looking at armed or non, you know, I've never liked the armed situation myself, so...
What about an analysis of the increased profit by virtue of having an exception to the ordinance?
I don't have the data on this, but I believe that there's not much profit, obviously, probably a lot of you know that there's not much profit in selling gas. It's a few pennies, and that usually disappears if there's any mechanical problem with any of the equipment. As far as the profit analysis, I don't have the data for that, but we are hoping that some customers who would be attracted to the business to buy beer and wine, they would also purchase our milk product, sandwiches, and other food products. We are looking more at increasing the foot traffic in the area.
Commissioner Wheeler, also, too, is that, I don't know, Mr. Cohen and commissioners, is that Mr. Cohen's just added a sandwich shop, it's a full-blown sandwich shop to the location, which is, which faces Avenue H there, and which he just recently opened up within the last month, yeah.
And again, if there's any issues we might have with safety and crime, we would be the first to hire security to handle that. We don't want to lose business, it would propagate.
How many employees do you have, actually, at the time?
Probably myself and my partner, of course, we're employees, but we don't pay ourselves. We have, I would say, maybe 11 or 12.
No, what I mean, like, at a time, like...
Oh, at a time?
Yes.
One person at a time, but during shift change, we have about an hour overlap.
Right, but...
And at midnight till morning, I'm sorry.
No, no, it's okay, go ahead, finish.
Yeah. Because of financial restriction, one person can handle the sales, and, but at midnight, from midnight till 6:00 AM, we lock the doors from outside, and we only have the window available to serve the customers.
So it's going to be, at nighttime, going to be one employee?
It's one person at any time.
Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead.
If, if you were granted a waiver, would you be opposed to a condition that said that at the director's request, you would add security if the director felt there was a problem?
Yeah, I run a small, small business, this will be economically very difficult to absorb. I, when I applied, we applied for the permission to build the location about three years ago or two years ago, I was standing here. Before the presentation, the city asked me, or requested that I, asked me, or told me that I need to have some security people, and then I contacted the staff, and I told them, please waive that, because we can't afford it, we are, we're running on a string budget here. We don't feel we have a need for security.
I guess my question is, if the commission or the director felt that you needed security, would you be opposed to having that as a condition? The other option, since just the ordinance for, correct me if I'm wrong, just a conditional use permit, if you didn't provide security, or they felt there was a problem, you would come before us for a review with a potential to pull your conditional use permit?
I don't remember at that time whether it was waived or, but we don't have any security now. However, if you grant us a few months of testing phase, where we have, if we have any problems, then we will come back and hire a security guard.
Security issues are typical conditions we place on sensitive operations, whether it be mini-marts, or restaurants, or nightclubs, or whatever. It's a, it's a pretty standard condition. If we, if we believe, and the director primarily, who is our enforcement arm, believes that there is a valid reason to, then we give him permission to impose that condition. If the applicant feels it's inappropriate, then he can make his case to the director. If he doesn't agree with you, then you come back before us. Security's pretty important in this town. Isn't that right, Mr. Ludiki?
Yes, it's always one of the primary concerns.
So why don't you think about that, and we'll listen to some public testimony, and then you'll get a chance to rebut, all right?
Okay, thank you.
Very good. So, any, any other speakers? We have some in favor and some opposed, then you can just share them with us, Mr. Ludiki.
Okay, I don't think I have any others in favor, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Ray Chavera?
Evening, Mr. Chavera, and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, staff, and audience. Mr. Chairman, I have what I might call a point of order, a point of information question. Do you want it an hour later?
You have three minutes, so you can use it any way you want.
With the preponderance of time you gave to the applicant, he got quite a fair share.
All right, we're going to start the clock at three minutes, and you're done in three minutes, Mr. Chavera, it's fair.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Beer and wine and distilled spirits. Beer and wine and distilled spirits. According to the Board of Equalization yearly report, beer is about eighty-three percent of all alcohol gallons consumed, twelve percent wine, five percent distilled spirits. So, if you take out the distilled spirits, you still have eighty-three and twelve, and you still have fortified beers, and you still have fortified wines, and you haven't even mentioned Alcopops, Mr. Chairman. The first ordinance that was evident here in Lancaster regulating alcoholic beverages was passed before I got here in 1990, and that was a mini-market ordinance. Both cities had a mini-market ordinance. They didn't have anything on any other type of alcohol outlets. Guess why? Finally, we got one down the street from Quartz Hill High School, the Arco Mini Market that's still selling. That led Reverend Hearns to ask me, what do you want me to do, Ray? And we started getting Mickey Mouse fifty percent alcohol ordinance in 1992. Hamdul followed suit. Now we have a comprehensive ordinance. One of the first times I saw R. X. Parrish in action here was when he was in the planning commission. And he took, he was one of the strongest voices in opposition for mobile mini-market at 20th Weston J, right across from the Great Wall, or your place, then went down the tubes. Never in my short experience have I heard of a council asking staff to do a study that normally that kind of information called for comes before this commission, either orally or written, some other form, or the city council. Staff is now directed to do that kind of homework. I'm glad it was, but as you've heard, you've heard a biased report naturally from a point of private interest, and I hope we had one that wasn't too biased. I'm sorry I didn't have a chance to copy this for you, Mr. Chairman, but, oh my God, I received a short paper from the ABC department this afternoon that shows that the other side of the street from that location has 266 percent above county average crime. However, the crime reporting district this applicant is in, just on this side of the border, is low crime, but he already has satisfied the ABC allowable for the number of types of license of this sort that they would allow. So, this city and the city council would have to pass a resolution on public convenience and necessity so you'd see the applicant here one more time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me overreach. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chavera, thank you.
Jonathan Salazar?
Is it Mr. Salazar, is it?
Sir.
Yes. Evening, welcome.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Jonathan Salazar, and I represent Congressman Buck McKean and State Assemblyman Steve Knight. I was also nominated by Mayor R. X. Parrish to serve as the chairman of the City of Lancaster's Youth Commission. As I represent the seven district high schools in the Ingle Valley, the issue of safety ought to be first in the decision process. Yes, we want a business-friendly environment, but at what cost? The city already has too many alcohol outlets that will even sell to minors. I know because I participated in a sting operation a few months ago. A few months ago, a sting operation was done by the police, the City of Lancaster. The survey came back as being ten percent that would sell to minors. A few weeks after that, some minors, including myself as a chaperone, went in, and that survey has risen to twenty-five percent because they saw the minors. So, we must ask ourselves, why take the risk? As my father, who was a former planning commissioner, Dr. Manuel Salazar, please oppose this as you helped to save the lives you represent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Salazar.
Ken Jones?
Welcome, Mr. Jones.
Commissioner Voess and Planning Commission, I appreciate your opportunity to speak. My name's Ken Jones, and I do live on the east side of Lancaster and have lived there for well over twenty years. I am an employee of the Lancaster Baptist Church, but I am not here officially representing Pastor Chapel or the church, but I have been requested by some of the membership of our church to speak on their behalf. Some of these are people who live in this particular neighborhood. Some of them are senior citizens who do not have access to the Internet, and as one told me, she was afraid to go to this commission, or to the meeting that they had because she didn't want the community to know she was a widow who lived by herself. There's another gentleman who lives in the area who's opposed to this mini-mart having alcohol, who has been, is an Iraqi veteran who is recovering from cancer and not able, was not able to attend. A few years ago, when this development aid, when this development company came to build a mini-mart, several of us raised a flag. We were working on, we had the alcohol ordinance, which is a model ordinance for the state of California. We said to the developer, do you realize you can't have alcohol there? You are violating the ordinance. He said, that will not be a problem because I don't intend to sell alcohol. We thought that unusual, but there was no reason to oppose him, so we said, go ahead. Glad to have a gas station. Now he comes back a few years later with the proverbial hat in hand saying, I need alcohol. And I think the underlying tone, as he mentioned in April and even to now is, I need the money. Now, he already admitted he cannot afford security. He's not going to have a lot of alcohol, and now he's asking for an exemption to our ordinance. We do not need an exemption. Why cut holes into a good ordinance? He has not given a valid reason why the community would be served. A short distance away, there are already a number of alcohol establishments that do have security. There are already some mini-markets in our town that are quite successful that don't sell alcohol. Yet, by his own admission, he'll have only one employee to police and be the security. He's going to only have a small amount of alcohol. How much is he going to have to sell to that neighborhood in order to make a profit? I think the risk of him having selling alcohol, the fact that he admits he cannot even provide security, how are we going to be sure? And in fact, the applicant was not even sure what the alcohols were. So, who's going to do the ordering? Who's going to do the regulating? Again, I don't think there's a reason to have a waiver and a good ordinance and start opening a door for a lot of exceptions where people will come and say, hey, I need the money. Make an exception for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And we have another speaker.
Lindy Williams?
Ms. Williams, welcome.
Hey, thank you all. I just want to say I live in the area, I'm walking distance from that place, and I'm talking, walking on my hands, about seven minutes, okay? And I'm injured and old and fat, so I can walk home from that store. With that, we have enough places to buy alcohol. Forgive me. We have enough places to buy alcohol. The reason I personally believe, because I do live in the area, that there is not trouble is because there's alcohol not there. When you go to the other places that do sell alcohol, you already know how you have to act, because if you get out of line, somebody's going to jam you up and tell you, get out of the store, and they're going to kick you out for a long time, because it is, for the most part, local community. They put this in here, come fair season, come Fourth of July, when everybody's sitting and drinking in the desert anyway to watch the free fireworks, because that's what we do. Yes, because I live over here, you guys should come down that way sometimes. What's going to happen is all those people are going to say, hey, let's go to the store, get the kids something. They're going to see that there's alcohol there. Now there's more drunk people in the desert driving down my street, bashing into my car, my neighbor's car, so on and so forth. We don't need it. I'm sorry, sir, because you've got a business, he's got to make his money, I understand, but we have plenty. We do not need any more. As far as what they're talking about with the walls, it is set up where you do, it's a little difficult to get in and out, so that is somewhat of a plus. The problem is, it's very close to age, and now when the alcohol does come, and the panhandlers come, and everybody else that comes, it's a straight shot to the freeway. Catch me if you can. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. White. Any other speakers?
I have no other speakers left, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Would the applicant care to rebut then, please? Anything?
Yes, I have to defend my reputation here. Did I raise my hand and promise to say that we will never sell alcohol? I would love to see if my voice was taped when this case was presented a few years ago. If my memory serves me right, a question was raised, are you planning to sell alcohol? I said we will. We did not apply here, and I don't see it as selling in the future. I don't remember exactly what I said, but there was never a promise or commitment made that we will never sell alcohol in the future. And I really hope that this was, my voice was taped a few years ago, and it's on record. As far as security, I never said we will not have security. We have adequately trained employees that know how to keep the place secure, and we will not let the place deteriorate. We will do our utmost, our best, to keep the place safe. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Cohen. Hang on a moment, there may be some questions for you. Or if Ms. Little wants to go ahead, you go ahead, and then?
Mr. Chairman, one of the things, too, that my, Mr. Cohen and myself were discussing in the past, was one of the things, a condition that possibly looking at it within a six-month period and reevaluating. I do believe that the direction of the director could be something that should be looked at. I do believe that in that period of time, that we've got to remember that with Mr. Cohen and his partner and the other employee that is there, there's always two people there at one time. If that is a condition, as far as setting forth, as far as putting security right off the bat, that would be a hardship. But as far as having extra personnel there, that would be a plus, yes.
All right, thank you. All right, so anyone have any questions of the applicant? Over here? None? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And so, it would be appropriate then to close the public hearing, and I want to ask Mr. Ludiki to address a couple of the points that were raised tonight. As it relates to the original application for this project way back when, 2006 maybe, none of us were involved, so could you refresh us, please, on what that was about?
Yeah, well, and I think we've clarified this several times, but I think it is important to state it again. The applicant, as a part of the initial application for the overall development, did state that it was not his intent to request the sale of alcohol. However, at the hearing, the question was asked, does that preclude him from requesting that in the future? The answer is no. He does have the right to make the request. So, I think, in fairness, and I don't think he's ever denied that he didn't intend to, he made the statement that he didn't intend to request the sale of alcohol, but he was also very clear with us in his question, does it prevent me from making the request in the future? The answer is no, and he has done that.
All right, thank you. I noticed in your staff report, you talked about an existing alcohol beverage sale being conducted by a facility at L. 8 and 60th West. I'm personally very familiar with that since I was the, since I brokered the deal and represented the applicant before the planning commission and city council in this city, prior to an ordinance being established. Matter of fact, if my memory serves, and my memory isn't great, but that was a precursor to establishing guidelines for alcohol beverage sales in this community, and ultimately it became an ordinance which morphed into the ordinance that we currently have, that you ultimately drafted and the planning commission considered and recommended to the city council, and the city council approved, right?
Correct.
So, two members of the city council currently approve that ordinance, one as chairman of the planning commission, and another as a member of the city council.
I believe that, I believe that is correct, yes.
Okay. So, that's my short history lesson of the thing. I would point out, it is interesting that that particular location was opposed at the time by the, by some of the neighborhood residents, one of whom happens to be sitting in the audience tonight. And it was ultimately mitigated, and the business was established, and it was, has become very successful. However, it was not a premature location, in my opinion, where, in my opinion, this particular location seems to be, seems like it was premature, given the circumstances of the marketplace and the difficulty that we're all facing today in the economics of our community. So, with that, I just wanted to be clear on the background and history of what we're faced. So, we have before us a recommendation to review the presented information, either approve it, conditionally approve it, or deny the request as the commission deems appropriate. So, for us to deliberate, we would need a motion. Does anyone care to offer one?
I move that we grant a waiver on CUP 10-04 for the first finding under Municipal Code 17 dot 42 dot 04 OC 1, that the proposed use would meet a specific community need by increasing public convenience through keeping vehicles out of the city core and on the peripheral loop. Second finding under Municipal Code 17 dot 42 dot 04 OC 2, that restrictions can be placed on the operation of the mini-market, including hours of sales and product containers that will adequately ensure that the waiver will not adversely affect nearby residents and facilities devoted to use by children, families and the general public.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second there.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. All right, so, that was a mouthful. Thank you for typing it out, so we can all have it before us. It should be one for staff. All right, so, we have a motion before us. What are your comments, if any, folks? Any?
I got a comment.
Go right ahead.
Should this be approved, I would like to see some type of review process, maybe a six-month review process to see, hear from the sheriff's department of how things are going and?
Okay. All right, anyone else?
So, the way the statute, or, pardon me, the ordinance reads is that if it's, you know, strictly reading it, if it's within 300 feet, it's not allowed, and if we make an exception to it, there's got to be a finding of community need, an affirmative finding of that that we make. That's what's before us. Is that accurate?
Right.
That's what I understood it to be.
And that's what the motion is, in Mr. Hall's words, that address the code.
So, the motion before us is to affirmatively grant the waiver?
Yes.
Okay.
So, a yes vote would grant the waiver, and if that motion carries, then we would take up, likely take up a resolution considering conditions.
And if it's not, then it's the end of the story?
For us, yes.
For us, and then, and then there's appeal rights?
Yes.
Okay.
And should we grant this waiver, it appears that we will be setting a precedence, correct? Regarding mini-marts?
That's a matter of opinion. I'm not sure that I share that, you know? I don't, personally, I don't think we're setting precedence when we, when we condition something, if we choose to condition it. That's just my personal opinion. You know, I agree with what Mr. Ludiki said in the beginning in his staff report, there's not a perfect ordinance. There's got to be some sort of a safety valve somewhere, and we're not the ultimate authority. I mean, we're the, we're the middleman and lady in the process, so, you know, it's my expectation, no matter what this commission does, it's likely going to get appealed, so I think we need to make a positive decision on it, one way or the other. I mean, historically, on, just for an example, and before you came on the commission, we considered back in November, December of last, this last year, a convenience store, as it turned out, it's not a mini-mart, it's a convenience store, so there was no beer, there was no gasoline sales, just right adjacent to us here on 10th Street West, near the corner of Jackman, I believe it was. Isn't that correct? And we went through a considerable amount of testimony, and we ultimately conditioned it, limited the beverage containers, the types of product, the hours of operation, the method of delivery. the method of delivery, on and on and on. And this is, this is a real small neighborhood kind of an operation. So I don't think we're setting, we would be setting a precedent, per se. I think every application stands on its own and needs a full hearing and proper consideration. You know, I'm a free market guy. I mean, that's, that's, that's where I come from. I mean, I believe the project that I promoted back nearly whatever in heck it was, 15, 20 years ago, I don't know, whatever it was. I don't think that's ever really been a problem out on the west side, an operational problem. But it's got restrictions on it, very, very strict restrictions, and I haven't heard from the sheriff's department that that's really been a problem. Has it been, Mr. Cooper?
So with a yes vote, we would then consider, it's not like the sale is automatically allowed, we then consider restrictions?
That's, that would be my recommendation and that would be the appropriate next step to adopt a resolution with, with whatever reasonable restrictions we choose to place on it, similar to what we've done with, and would be considering in our next agenda item and what we've done in our past history, if we choose to grant the waiver. Has to be at least, what, four votes to grant the waiver? Would that be correct?
If I could say something?
You go right ahead.
You know, whether there's a, a public need or not, I think there is, how much of a public need. Now, I guess it's, there's going to be varying opinions on that, but if we do pass this waiver, we have to consider public safety, obviously, but I think we can address that safety with conditions. I think we always can. Whether or not the applicant can live with our conditions or not, I get, that's another issue. So, that's...
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Is the actual text of the ordinance in our staff report, is, isn't it?
It should be, but they're just highlighted in blue, if you want to read it on the top. All right, anyone else? Okay, so we've, we have a duly offered motion and properly seconded, and we all have a copy of it in front of us to grant the waiver. So, any further comments or questions? Please vote. Okay, the waiver... I should go to Las Vegas. I think I should go to Las Vegas. That's exactly how I thought it would turn out.
The waiver passes by a, by a vote of five to two. The next issue that you would need to take up is findings, the normal findings under the alcohol ordinance, plus any added conditions.
In anticipation of a vote in favor or a vote opposed, I asked Mr. Ludiki to prepare a draft resolution of findings for us to consider in a format that we typically use when we make findings relative to projects of similar type. And I pass that out to you. The highlighted areas on the first page are findings we must make. The highlighted areas on the second page are under item four, as well as item 10. A, B, and C under four and item 10 would be appropriate to consider. So... The process should be a motion to adopt this resolution, but it's, it's very challenging to adopt a resolution that we need to fill in the blanks on. So, maybe we ask for some guidance, Mr. Ludiki?
Yes. As far as the first page is concerned, the language that was essentially in the motion offered by Commissioner Hall and seconded, that language would, would be dropped into that portion of the ordinance or the resolution, because that is, those are essentially the findings that you made in regards to the, the waiver itself.
So that would be appropriate under, under the...
Under one and two.
Under one and two?
Correct. So essentially, I think that, that portion of the deliberation is concluded. I think, I actually believe that as far as number four, A, B, and C, nine and 10 are concerned, you may find it a little easier to work backwards in the sense of your reasoning for, for particularly under number four, which speaks directly to the issue of whether it would adversely affect surrounding area, property and so forth, I think is directly tied to the issue of what restrictions you place or conditions you would place on the use. So I, I think if you were to sort that out first, it's probably easier to come back and, and use those as the justification or the findings.
We've talked about some conditions in broad, brush terms. You've been kind enough to provide us with a potential list of conditions for CUP 10-4 for us to consider. Are there sufficient copies to pass out to the applicant?
Do we have an extra? Yes.
And anybody else that wants them? For the public's sake, please understand that the public hearing is closed and it's the commission's business now to consider what conditions we might add to a resolution. And then we still have to approve a resolution, so, which may or may not happen. People have been known to change their mind. So, the general advisory relative to standard conditions of our, of our standard conditional use permit conditions, item number four, 11 through 30, are concerned with the construction development of a project which are, which has already taken place and those conditions have been implemented on the project. Would that be correct?
Yes, that's correct. Those are, those are conditions that really, as far as the sale of alcohol, aren't terribly pertinent.
Okay.
There are, however, several, several that I would call to your attention and I, because they were involved in your earlier discussion, I think they merit some attention on, on your part as the, the commission. The, the one, which is condition number 47...
Yes.
Essentially pulls over the requirements that are contained in the city's alcohol ordinance. If you go to condition, proposed condition number three, there are a couple of things in there that are, that I think are fairly important and they're, they're highlighted. The first is acceptable sales hours. As, as you see in the draft, those currently are listed as 7:00 AM to 12:00 AM, Sunday through Saturday, or essentially every day of the week. The other speaks to the issue of no sales of separated package of alcoholic beverages. But there's also been some discussion about the types of things that, that logically could be sold and perhaps additional restrictions in that area. Condition number 48 has to do with the issue of security, and onsite security. And what, what we have done generally for retail types of uses is indicated that onsite security needs to be provided if it's determined necessary by the planning director. However, in practice, and also incorporated now in the wording as, as the draft of condition 16, is that we are not, or I would not, from a staff perspective, be willing to do that unless that came out of some consultation with the sheriff's department in which they said, this is a problem that onsite security is necessary to solve. And the reason for that is that sometimes issues are not best solved by onsite security. Sheriff's department may have other approaches that, that may work. So it's not that we can't require it, it's just that it's really something that needs to be done in, in sort of a cooperative arrangement with the, with the sheriff's department itself. I would recommend that you, if you look at putting a requirement in for that, that you consider language that's similar to what, to what's drafted there.
All right, thank you. Okay. So, the revised alcohol sales conditions talk about an hour, hours of sale potentially at 7:00 AM to midnight? Would that be correct?
Yes, kind of in, in keeping with that, I think the, the applicant mentioned that they, I assume this is a 24-hour operation, but they lock the doors to the facility at midnight. If you see further down also, and this is one of the conditions that the sheriff's department is kind of typically requiring on these kinds of operations, is that you can't, is a restriction that you can't sell alcohol to people essentially through a, a pass-through window or drawer.
No matter what time of the day.
Right. They have to go in the facility. If this facility is in fact locked at midnight, then certainly...
Or 7:00 PM for that matter.
Yeah, or whenever it happens to be locked, you know, you, you obviously can't sell alcohol based on the, the approach that we want to be followed. People need to physically be able to enter the facility to, to purchase.
But what you've delineated here are similar conditions for the majority of them. There's a couple here that I would have questions about or comments about, but I'll save them and see if anybody else has anything, wants to ask or question or talk about. Anyone? No? Number five talks about the applicant shall limit the floor area of the display and sales of alcoholic beverages to a maximum of 215 square feet of sales floor area. This calculation shall include enclosed cooler displays, shelf space, or floor space in the cooler if customers are able to access the cooler to purchase product. What that means to me is that I've seen in some operations where customers can actually access the walk-in cooler and pick up cases of product or whatever and, and carry them to the checkout area. So this would include, the square footage calculation would include that floor space?
Yes, it would, as the condition is drafted.
And no individual containers, cans, or bottles of beer or malt liquor shall be allowed at all, none. No sales of any type or size of product commonly described as fortified wine shall be allowed. No malt beverage products shall be sold regardless, regardless of the individual container's size and quantities of less than six per sale, except in manufactured prepackaged four packages. Wine shall not be sold in containers of less than 750 milliliters. 750 milliliter or larger bottles of wine must be sealed with a cork, not a screw-top seal. And wine coolers must be sold in manufactured pack, prepackaged multi-unit quantities, so no individual sales of those. So what, so what isn't in here as it relates to alcohol beverage sales that we might be concerned about?
The applicant, in his statements, and you may want to ask his further clarification on this, I thought made the statement that he was willing to not sell any kind of malted liquor beverage.
I think that's what this says.
Well...
That's what this proposed condition says, is, is it not?
Well, I, I think, to go one step further though, I, I think he's indicating he wouldn't sell malt liquor at all, even if it was part of a...
Maybe that's why...
...multi-unit pack. But I, but I'm, I'm not sure that I heard that correctly in his testimony.
Well, number 12 says, no malt beverage product shall be sold regardless of the individual container's size. That, that...
In quantities...
Does this say what you just said?
Well, in quantities of less than six per sale. It still would permit the sale, but in, in multiple packages.
Oh.
I, I thought his statement...
I'm following you now.
Yeah. I, when you were mentioning a number of these interesting names of product, that I thought that he had said, no, we wouldn't want to sell those things, so...
I heard, I heard testimony talking about a product that I'd never heard of before, but maybe it's a, I've never heard of, is it Alcohol Pops? Was that the right?
Yeah, I think Mr. Chavira mentioned Alco Pops.
Alco Pops, okay.
Alco Pops, yes.
That is, so...
And, and if that's, if that's an industry term, you could certainly drop it into the conditions, but I'm not, Mr. Chavira's probably the closest to industry expert on if that's a industry term, so...
So, Chairman Boz, could we just put a period there after sold and then strike the rest of the number 12?
Yep. It seems to me that would work. If that's, if that's your pleasure. So, no malt beverage product shall be sold, period? All right, anything else we need to tear up, beat up?
He said that he had 16 security cameras and, and with security cameras, you can have it record, and most security systems have the ability to upload to a secure website. If you had high-speed internet, it's just a simple connection, software deal. If the code was known to our local sheriff's department, they could pull up their smartphone or whatever and see the video feed. And I would love to see something like that on a voluntary basis start to be instituted throughout the city. Business owners that are concerned about security could do something similar to that.
Interesting.
I'm not going to make it as a proposed condition, I just wanted to make sure it was read out.
It'd be interesting to, certainly not tonight, to talk about it, because it's, you know, the hour's getting late, but maybe it's something that, that the commission would be interested in hearing about relative to security surveillance on, on these things with the...
I would give it as another tool for law enforcement.
Yeah, assuming they, they have the ability to monitor and the time to...
And with facial...
Not, not running 12 calls behind, you know, or whatever.
Well, with facial recognition software and the types of systems the sheriffs are using now in their patrol cars, they could actually have that hit somewhere and then they would kind of know where somebody was that they were looking for. If it was instituted citywide, it would have to be a voluntary... If it was instituted citywide, it would have to be a voluntary program.
Yeah, interesting. All right. Anyone else have anything to offer on this? Okay. So, under item number 4A, the hours of operation, as you've suggested, Mr. Lutowski, would be from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 a.m. Shouldn't that be 12:00 midnight? Is there such a thing as 12:00 a.m.?
Well, there is to me. But we could make it 12:00 midnight in case there's a question.
How about 10:00 p.m.? Anybody have a burning desire for a shorter time? Give anybody a-
Well, having worked swing shift, swing shift usually gets out at 11:00, 11:30, so midnight seems reasonable to me.
Swing shift where?
Well, the economy picks up, Chairman Bose.
Ah, okay. I'm fast asleep by then, as a matter of fact, you know, 12:00 midnight, okay.
I have one quick question.
Pardon?
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Item 16, where they talk about onsite security, be determined if necessary by the planning Does the planning director also have the ability to recommend, to revoke a liquor license?
Have to ask him.
Yes, I have the ability to recommend that, however, the Commission has the authority to revoke it.
So this could come back to the Commission if it's referred by the planning director? Or should it be referred back?
Sure, I could recommend to you that you call something back in front of you if there has been a defined problem. You as a Commission yourselves can call something up to look at it, and we have that authority under the alcohol provisions in the ordinance.
Great, thank you.
Slightly off the subject, existing non-conforming facilities under the ordinance, which is not before us tonight, do we have the ability to call those up?
Those are a little bit tougher, deemed approved type uses, in other words, uses that predate the ordinance. We do have a process to go through if there are identified problems with them, but it's a little bit trickier because you are dealing with really strict due process procedures. But there is a process laid out in the ordinance for dealing with uses that were established before this ordinance was put into effect, but are causing some identified nuisance or problem to their surrounding area. Yes, there is a process to do that.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So the hours of operation under 4A would be 7:00 a.m. to midnight, 12:00 midnight? No objections from anyone? Restricting the delivery hours under B to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.? We've had discussions about the trash trucks showing up, you know, prior to 7:00 a.m. and that, so this would control that as well, hopefully?
Yeah, trash trucks seem to run on their own schedule, unfortunately. This was really designed more to deal with the, you know, trucks that come and deliver product to the site. I don't know that it would effectively restrict trash pickup, though.
I know the petroleum product delivery oftentimes takes place, you know, it takes place on the schedule of the ability to deliver product, not necessarily. And since we now have vapor recovery, we don't get the fuel smell anymore theoretically when product's being dumped, so. But this would limit that as well?
Yes, it would.
Okay. Anybody have any burning desire to change it from?
Distill spirits, no. No one distill spirits?
No what?
Distill spirits?
No distill spirits, absolutely no.
Can I ask you a question?
Go ahead.
concerning the delivery of gasoline. Is there a specific reason why we would want to restrict gasoline deliveries? I know it's very convenient to do it in off-hours, especially at that location. It's kind of tight, especially where the gas truck is.
Yeah, the applicant may want to speak closer. I don't know when his normal deliveries come in. We only looked at it from the standpoint of what potentially causes disruption to the adjacent neighborhood, and you do have a neighborhood, you know, right over the back wall in that instance.
I think noise would be a factor, but I don't know that noise would be a factor with a delivery of gasoline.
I mean, it depends on the skill of the driver, if he's not dropping the, banging the hoses in the receptacles and playing his radio, you know, whatever.
Certainly.
Most of the product delivery folks are under control pretty well by the companies that own them. They don't like to get complaints from cities about making noise in neighborhoods or anywhere else for that matter. That's for sure. I don't know, it would-
I mean, I wouldn't mind restricting it to store deliveries, but I don't know that restricting gasoline sales is going to help anybody, I really don't, or gasoline deliveries.
Yeah, it's a tight site, and, you know, depending on the success and the volume of sales and that, I mean, it's... So you're really looking at the delivery hours of non-gasoline product? Is that really what you're, what we would be considering here by restricting hours of delivery?
Yes, if that's the Commission's pleasure, we can define it as non-gasoline deliveries.
And if it turns out that it becomes problematic, and if we hear from the community about it, and it becomes problematic, then I would think that it'll be back in front of us again, or you'd be making a recommendation to us from that regard? And C, jeopardizing, endangering, and otherwise constitute a menace to public health, safety, and general welfare because of the project would have adequate conditions, that we are restricting the container size, the types of sales, to control loitering and the ability to provide security should it become problematic? That's really what we've said here by adding-
Yes.
Adding the alcohol conditions on the condition list, right? Under C?
Yes.
Okay. And then nine is clear?
Yeah, in some ways it mirrors portions of the other findings.
Yes, okay.
I guess I didn't, wasn't completely thorough. 10 actually is somewhat a restatement of number two, so I think the same finding-
It is. Which is the previous motion we adopted. Okay, anything else that we should be considering? Your Chair, Mr. Lutowski.
I think, given what's already in the alcohol ordinance plus the added conditions, it certainly represents the same level of restriction that we've placed on other users. And in some cases, particularly with the restriction on malted beverages, it exceeds those, so I don't think, from a restriction standpoint, it's lax, let's put it that way.
You believe they're reasonable conditions?
Yes, actually I do. I think they're reasonably related to the potential impacts of the use, and that's the purpose of conditions, you know?
Okay. All right, any additional comments from the members before we consider a motion to adopt this resolution as proposed? Resolution number 10-dash, do you have a number for us?
Joy, who's the expert at this, says it's 10-43.
43, 4-3?
I have a procedural question.
Go ahead.
Now, this is a freestanding vote, regardless of how the Commission's experience. Given the way the Commission voted in the last motion, do we vote whether or not these petitions on the sale of alcohol products-
That was my question, and that's why I posed it, yes. Right. Because it's my belief if you vote in favor of the motion, if someone makes it, to adopt this resolution, that the conditions that we are imposing are in fact reasonable. We would make that finding, and if you vote no, you don't think they are reasonable, maybe not strict enough. So, anyway, so, it would be appropriate then? Any other questions or comments before we consider a motion? From anybody? Okay, it would be appropriate then to consider a motion to adopt Resolution 10-43, as we have read the conditions into the record and filled in the blanks, if you will, on the document before us. That be an appropriate motion, Mr. Adams?
Yes, that would be appropriate.
All right, someone care to offer that motion?
Chairman Bose, I move that we approve conditional use permit number 10-04, including the waiver of normal distance requirements for off-site alcohol sales establishments in a commercially planned development zone with the conditions listed under number one and two, with our discussion for A, B, and C with the hours and the delivery trucks as we had discussed, restricting the container sizes, controlling loitering, providing the security. And number nine, that we will not adversely affect nearby residents and facilities because of the proximity of the proposed alcohol beverage establishment to existing residential areas, because adequate restrictions on the type of products sold, including container sizes and placement of condition to control hours of sales, hours of delivery, and control potential loitering will provide an adequate level of safety. Number 10, that the proposed sale of alcohol in the existing many market serves the public convenience and necessity based on factors outlined in Section 17 dot 42 dot 060 in the municipal code. Because we have the restrictions.
All right, thank you. Do you have a second? A second? My second? Thank you, Mr. Murray. All right, so it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion, question, comment? Please vote.
I have one, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
The findings that the applicant has meant the exclusions that is built into the ordinance, those are built into this current motion?
We made that, we made, the motion, the previous motion we approved made that finding on the waiver.
Are those included within this motion?
No, we've already done that.
It sounds like I just heard from the gentleman.
Well-
Man.
He restated them as it related to items one and two of the, one, two, three, four, five, six-
Seven whereabouts.
Okay, so he inserted them. So we're not reconsidering the waiver.
Mr. Henry, although the waiver's not being reconsidered, it is reiterated in the findings of this motion.
Right, but we're not reconsidering the waiver?
That's correct, however, as a practical matter, they are being reiterated within the findings of this motion, so I think if your question is, would a yes vote on this motion essentially be a yes vote as to those previous findings in the previous motion?
I guess it would be.
Essentially, they would be, yes.
In effect, it's belt and suspend, or so.
Correct.
Right? Right, okay. All right, so we're clear? Everybody clear how we're-
I am now. Thank you.
Okay, good. All right, so, anything further? Please vote.
Okay, motion passes five to two. As always, the decision is appealable in accordance with the requirements of the city's municipal code.
All right. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break and then we'll come back. All right, so, we're back in session. Everybody's in their place. The next item is a public hearing on conditional use permit 10-21, uh, the Korea Kitchen. It's a conditional use permit for the entertainment use and to change an existing alcohol beverage control type twenty-one, excuse me, type forty-one license on sale beer and wine for a bona fide restaurant to an ABC type forty-seven license on sale general for a bona fide restaurant within the Korea Kitchen and an, an existing restaurant located in a CPD zone. So, without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter, and, um, do we have any speakers on this one, Mr. Ludicke?
I have no speakers on this item, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Could we have a, just a brief staff report on this? I, we've heard it in our, um, staff briefing last week. Could we have just a, a quick, quick one on this? Thank you.
Okay. Chairman Vos and Commissioners, um, the applicant is wanting to change their alcohol license and open up the, uh, entertainment, uh, for paid entertainment on, uh, Fridays and Saturday nights. So after ten o'clock, they would be charging a, um, entertainment, a fee to, to go into the, um, unit. All the entertainment would be conducted inside the building, and, um, Brian, can I get you to change the screen so you can see the floor plan? Oh, one more time, 'cause that's not quite... Okay, that's the entrance, and at that podium or that credenza there, um, they plan on having, um, the people paying at that place, and then there'd be the ID at the, at the beginning. If you enter to the left, and if you change the screen again, inside the dining, these aren't very good pictures, but inside the dining area, there would be a, um, dance area and, um, a band area. And that would be the area in the large dining area for the paid entertainment, and that is, as you go to the left of, to the building. There, there'd be a sports bar as well to the right of that entrance. Um, the hours of operation for the restaurant would be Sunday through Thursday, and we wrote from eleven-thirty to midnight, and Friday and Saturday from eleven-thirty to, to two o'clock. In conversation with the applicant, she would like to, um, change the hours of operation to ten, ten o'clock, to midnight, on Sunday and Thursday, and ten o'clock to, to two AM on Friday and Saturday, in case they decide they want to open for breakfast. So they would like the hours changed, and that didn't come to us until today. Basically, the patrons attending the entertainment event would be twenty-one years of age or older, and, um, between the hours of nine PM and ten PM at the entrance of the restaurant, attendance and tendance to the entertainment event shall be controlled by the issuance of wristbands. They're basically planning on operating like Fresco. If you're in there before ten o'clock, you're, and you're having dinner, you can stay. Um, after ten o'clock, twenty-one-year-old attendees, you have to be twenty-one years old to attend the paid events. And that pretty much concludes my report. Trying to keep it as brief as possible, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, there may be some.
Okay.
Anyone?
Can you go over the hours that changed that they...
Right.
They requested again?
Um, on condition number two, it says Sunday through Thursday between eleven-thirty AM to midnight. We want to change eleven-thirty AM to ten AM. Staff has no, uh, problem with that request, and on the second part of the sentence, Friday and Saturday, between, right now it reads between eleven-thirty AM to two AM, like to change that to state between ten AM and two AM. Again, the applicant had asked to change that in case they would like to open for breakfast.
Thank you.
So you're talking about under the general advisory? Is that what, is that what you just referred to?
Yes, in the conditions under general advisory, number two.
So you're, so the paid entertainment hours would be on Friday and Saturday, you're suggesting that it's ten AM to two AM?
No, that would be just the hours for the restaurant. The paid entertainment is incidental to the restaurant, and the last sentence that basically says, "We'll stay the same." The paid entertainment hours would be Friday and Saturday between nine PM and, to two AM. That, that's the only time they plan on, uh, charging a cover charge.
Okay. I'm, I'm trying to figure out what you changed in item two.
Okay. The hours of operation for the restaurant. So let me read it.
Sunday through Thursday between...
Ten AM to midnight.
Instead of eleven eight, thirty AM.
Right, scratch eleven-thirty and replace it with ten.
Instead of midnight, it would be two AM?
No. It would just change the, the morning hour, so it would say, which, instead of eleven-thirty to midnight, it would say ten AM to midnight.
Okay.
And Friday and Saturday between ten AM and two AM, and the last sentence stays the same.
Okay.
Sorry.
Got it. Go ahead. Anyone? Pardon?
Did that, uh, change?
Oh, it's, it is? Oh, okay. Didn't read it, thank you for pointing that out. Now, these folks have been in business for quite a while in our community, what, five, six years?
Yes.
And if I understand it correctly, we've, they've had, um, limited permit opportunities to run, to run this type of, um, entertainment on a limited basis, and it's been successful and no, and not a problem, uh, a law enforcement problem or anything like that, right?
That's correct. The sheriff's supporting the project with some conditions that we added.
So, okay. And then in your staff report, I should say under the conditions on page two, you expanded the, uh, which you just gave us a report on.
That's right, we added ten, A through G, eleven and twelve. The sheriff had a chance to go and speak with them on Tuesday. We finalized everything probably Friday, and we sent them a copy, and they agreed to everything.
With these odd hours and wristbands and all the rest of it, I mean, it, it, uh, I mean, I don't know how the patrol deputies deal with stuff like this. I'm assuming that from the conditions that we require them to post the precise conditions of approval on the premises, and that they are available to the sheriff's department when they're asked to see them, or a city official, whatever it may be, that's how the, the local deputy on patrol can figure it out if there's a call there. Is that how it works?
That's what I believe, that's how I believe it works, yes. Because the ordinance states that the conditions of approval have to be onsite.
Right, so the, so the, so if there's a call, that, you know, an underage drinking, for instance, or something to that effect, then, then when they, when the deputy arrives at the premise, then these conditions are readily available and posted for anyone and everyone to see? Is that how it works?
They are to be available for, for anyone to look at. Um, the other, the other part of the ordinance is that, um, any kind of training that they have provided to their staff, which they're required to do under the ordinance to, you know, A, I think ABC provides that kind of, of, you know, informed server training, or however they call it, um, that those records of training also have to be available. So, the, the intent there is really to, to place all persons who, who have establishments that are selling or serving alcohol, that, uh, you know, if there's a problem, that there's a way for, you know, the appropriate authorities to, to verify what they should be doing and what they shouldn't be doing.
Seem like it would be rather complicated with multiple operations with multiple conditions in various locations throughout our community. It's gotta be a challenge for the, for the rank-and-file guys and gals that are out there trying to...
I, yes, I, well, certainly, I think it would be, although, and, you know, Deputy Cooper could probably answer it too, I'm not, I'm not sure that's the first thing they ask for when they arrive at a...
May not be, but, but, uh, when the argument ensues, I mean, you know, but, what, you know, what about the general public? I mean, um, I mean, this is, this is an odd, to me, it's an odd marketing combination. Okay, that's just my personal point of view, it's an odd layout, odd circulation, but may, you know, but I'm not a restaurant operator, so...
Yeah.
But the condition of a bona fide restaurant still must be upheld.
Correct.
They must produce fifty-one percent of their total revenue, excluding alcohol beverage sales and...
Yes.
Cover charges and all that sort of stuff.
Yes.
And has to be bona fide food sales.
Yes.
Fifty-one percent or better.
Yes.
Otherwise, they're not a bona fide restaurant.
Correct.
Okay. And we have those conditions that we're looking at in other places in our town, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Anyone else have anything? All right. Would be appro, we have no applicant, no one here to talk about this, no one interested in it?
We do have the applicant.
Oh, okay. I didn't realize that, well, that's how I thought we had... Oh, all right, welcome, you are?
Thank you, my name is Mula Alamayo.
Welcome.
And I'm one of the owners of Korea Kitchen, and, uh, some of you may wonder, I don't know Korean, I'm Ethiopian, but my husband is Korean, and that's how we opened the restaurant. Uh, we've been in business, um, in this community for the last five years, and, uh, as a small family-owned restaurant, we have been struggling for the last five years, and, um, we were at the point of where my husband and I had decided we need to shut down this restaurant because it has completely depleted us from being able to continue to feed the restaurant and, um, continue to have it, um, exist. Um, however, having spent, um, more than a million dollars in this restaurant from our own investments and very little help from any financial, um, support, my husband and I have been very adamant in making sure that this restaurant does succeed. making sure that this restaurant does succeed. We also felt that we had very strong support from our employees that we felt dedicated to and felt that we needed to at least keep their jobs open as well. However, in all the five years that we have run this restaurant, we have always been dedicated to its integrity and also dedicated to its quality and have always tried to bring the best to the community. I'm not sure if most of the members of the commission have been to our restaurant or any of the people here today, but if you walk into our restaurant, you will see that we do try to maintain that quality. And we have actually even changed our name to Hidden Treasure Sports Bar and Grill. And that name has actually come about from a lot of our customers walking into our restaurant and telling us, wow, this is a beautiful place, this is a hidden treasure. And we cherish that and have, and are currently actually doing business as Hidden Treasure, but still under Korea Kitchen, Inc. I would like to really commit to this commission and to the community that the type of entertainment that we're trying to bring into the community is really nothing that we will support producing any kind of problems or chaos or a type of crowd that is going to be rowdy whatsoever. We are actually trying to create an entertainment environment for people, I would say, my age group and older, or maybe slightly younger than me maybe, but at least 30 and over. And a lot of the bands that we bring will be jazz bands, a lot of the music that we will be having will be very mellow 70s, 80s, 90s type of music that I don't think is going to encourage any of the younger crowd to come into the establishment and create any problems. We're very serious about making sure that our employees who do serve the beer, and right now we're only a beer and wine, who do serve the beer and wine are asking for IDs. I specifically tell my employees, anybody that you think is 35 and under or 30 and under, you ID and you ask, that you do verify their ages. We've never had a problem in that instance. We've had a limited Labor Day weekend, three-day event that we've had, and we have not had any problem with that as well. And during those events as well, we made sure that we did have security personnel on the premises and making sure that we don't have any loitering or anything outside of the premises. And it was just an older professional crowd really coming into our establishment after work, just trying to have fun, and that's the kind of what, that we're gearing to. And we intend to continue to have the security enforced and at the point where if we can ever afford a liquor license, and we do have a liquor license, then we intend to train our employees at a much higher standard and making sure that we don't have any problems. So that said, this is something that we are hoping if we add to, to our business, that it would help us to be able to survive and to be able to continue to have the restaurant. And I assure you, Chairman Voss, that the restaurant actually, even with these events that are going on, I know your concern was, are they really a bona fide restaurant? And even with the event, on the days of the events, which is really limited to Friday and Saturday, we still have our kitchen and our restaurant available until midnight. So our kitchen is open until midnight and even later with appetizers and so forth. So we will continue to be serving food and entertainment as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer it.
Thank you. And one of your comments relative to the kitchen being in operation, I think that, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Ludeke, but doesn't, in a bona fide restaurant that serves this type that we're, is proposed before us, doesn't the kitchen need to be open all the time?
The kitchen is supposed to be open during, during typical hours of operation. Now, what we have done in some instances, and I guess the best example is the Bahama Mama facility that's kind of at the other end of the same center. In that discussion, we were willing, because it was only a limited number of days per week, and it was a defined set of days, that we were willing to go ahead and allow this type of a use as a accessory to that because there was a certainty on the part of patrons as to when restaurant service would be available and when it in fact becomes more of the paid entertainment nightclub type arrangement. I think that two days a week, I don't know that we have a real concern with that. I think if it begins to get to the point where you're doing four days a week or something like that, then I, I would begin to question whether there's kind of a change of use occurring. But under the current proposal and as we've conditioned it, staff is satisfied that there's not a problem with that.
Okay. Well, when I read the staff report, it said after 10:00 p.m. a modified menu would be offered to include additional finger foods, appetizers, and everything on the regular menu except grilled items. That's what the staff report says, so.
Actually, I think you're right, and I stand corrected in that. I think it was in our earlier discussions that we were saying midnight, but I think we did decide that we were going to have the limited items available and up to 10:00 o'clock that we would have everything on our main menu. It's just our restaurant is really more geared towards grilling, and we just don't want to have grilling after 10:00 o'clock and...
I personally don't have a problem either way. I'm just trying to verify what, what the conditions are so there's no misunderstanding. I, you know, you don't...
Yes. And I think on the conditions, we had revised it where we said it was going to be open, so I stand corrected.
Personally, I hope you're very successful with this, and it's, it sounds to me like it, it's a niche in the marketplace that we don't, aren't currently serving in our community, so it sounds like it would be a neat thing to have in our town. For those of you that stay up past 10:00 o'clock.
I hope you do one day, if we can do this.
Yeah, maybe tonight. Yeah, well, maybe tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any other speakers, Mr. Ludeke?
I have none other on this item, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. So then it would be appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on conditional use permit 10-21.
I'll move to adopt resolution number 10-44, approving conditional use permit number 10-21.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Or two to that. Did you want to extend their hour, allow them to have the hours at 10:00 o'clock in the morning?
Okay, I wasn't sure who was speaking.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Voss, I mean Chairman Voss, would you like to change the condition number two to allow them to have, to open earlier at 10:00 o'clock in the morning?
That's what you had recommended to us, right?
Right.
And I believe that was the motion, including your recommendation.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Yeah, I think that's what the motion was. Wasn't it, Dan?
Yes.
Maybe.
It is now.
Maybe.
Whatever, it is now.
Now that she hit us over the head with a hammer, yeah, well, fine. We'll pay stricter attention from now on. Getting close to my bedtime, so. Raj is just waking up. All right, buddy? Yep. All right. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. Next item is public hearing on tentative parcel map 71355. It's to subdivide, subdivision of two lots in an office professional zone. The applicant is the Lancaster redevelopment agency. So without objection, the public hearing is open on this matter, and we have... Do we need a staff report on this? Do we, electively?
We just need to modify a condition.
Pardon?
Another one?
What?
I said we do need to modify a condition.
Ah, well, then give us a brief staff report and tell us what you want to modify.
Okay, it's very brief. Basically, we're dividing two, the property into two lots, and the parcels are being reconfigured to reflect a future county medical development. The project meets the zoning requirements for the OP zone, sufficient access utilities and infrastructure exist or can be extended to serve the project. Therefore, staff is recommending that the commission approve tentative parcel map number 71355 with modified condition number six. In your conditions list, it was deleted, and now we want to add it, we want to keep it in, so it'd be modified condition six and renumbered from, at that point. And that concludes my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so we won't get in any trouble now. The modified, the condition list that used, that eliminated number six and renumbered seven through 12 is now reverted back to include condition number six and renumber everything else except for condition 10, which stays out.
That is correct.
It's clear as marmalade, I think. All right. Hopefully, we're clear on that. Thank you. What you didn't tell us, Ms. Donovan, is that, you're sure not the one that forgot that this didn't need to come out, right? Somebody else, it was somebody else that...
This is it.
No big deal. We will, we will be developing Third Street East and the intersection Avenue I. Perfect, okay, great. All right. So, any speakers on this? No? No? No speakers? Good. All right, then it'd be appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on parcel map 71355.
I'll make a motion there.
I'll make a motion that we adopt resolution number 10-46 approving tentative parcel map number 71355 with the modified condition number six.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All right. Any questions, further questions, comments? Please vote.
Motion passes 7-0.
Thank you. All right. And the next item on our agenda is item number eight, which is an amendment to Title 17 of the Lancaster Municipal Code and zoning ordinance for non-commercial wind energy systems, NC-WES. And we will have a staff report on this, I believe. Right?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Chairman Voss, members of the commission, this is a proposal to amend some of the city's current regulations regarding the installation of wind turbines. Specifically, it would amend certain provisions of that with respect to the city's RR1 and RR2.5 zones, essentially the rural residential zones where there's a minimum lot size requirement of 40,000 square feet. What, what this would do is allow the installation of small energy wind systems on these rural, rural-sized properties with a process that doesn't require them to go through a conditional use permit effort. Currently, if somebody were to request the installation of those, one of those systems on their property, they would be required to go through the city's normal conditional use permit process, which is approximately an $8,000 filing fee plus a hearing in front of the commission. We feel in looking at both the state requirements, some other cities' requirements in terms of how they deal with these types of issues in their larger lot areas, and with some conversation with at least one particular individual who markets these types of systems, that there's probably some, some real room in our ordinance to make this process a little more streamlined, a lot less expensive, and not totally eliminate the, the need to at least notify the adjoining property owners of what the intent is. So what we would do under this ordinance is establish a process whereby if somebody wanted to put in a small energy, wind energy system that met the requirements of the ordinance, they would file with the city a director's review application, a fee of approximately $350. They would supply a mailing list of adjacent property owners within 300 feet of the property. Those owners would in fact be notified of the intended request. They would have their opportunity to provide any feedback to city staff that they wished to. The decision for approving the wind energy system would rest with the planning director. That decision would be appealable should there be some adjoining property owner that really felt that they were harmed by this particular approval of a wind energy system. Now, in looking in particular at Santa Clarita's ordinance earlier today, I was struck by how little theirs has in it compared to how much ours has in it. Their height limits are the same, their lot size related to those height limits are the same. They don't establish any limits on rotor width, they don't establish any, any particular requirements other than certain setbacks. So I guess I stand corrected in a conversation that I've had with Mr. Bruce Hatchett that maybe we do have some fairly onerous requirements, but in, in our defense, we will say that those were originally established in 1982. One thing, however, as seems to be the case this evening with a number of other things, I have made an error in the drafting of the ordinance with respect to rotor diameter. In my conversations with Mr. Hatchett, he constantly referred to a 12-foot blade, which I mistakenly assumed to be a diameter. He has kindly informed me in a, in an email earlier that the diameter for, typical for these systems is, is 24, 23 to 24. So I don't have any problem with, with making that change or recommending that change in the ordinance to you. The type of system that we're talking about is best shown by, and in fact is, an example of it, is located on the, the north side of the Antelope Valley Freeway at Beryl Springs Road. For those of you who are familiar with driving northbound on that area, there is a, there's a homeowner that has had for quite a while a wind turbine in their yard. That is the type of thing, in fact, the very type of system that we're talking about. From our standpoint, this is certainly, given the rural areas that we are restricting it to, and the fact that the state itself has established a number of requirements as far as what we need to allow in height and so forth, and the city's desire to encourage alternative forms of, of energy and electricity generation, I think that this ordinance proposal certainly lines up with all of that. And I don't have any problem in recommending approval of it to you. There have been some questions raised about what should the city do with regards to these types of things in more urban areas. I will tell you that at this point in time, I'm, I'm not as convinced about whether those ought to be allowed in urban residential areas. I think there are some aesthetic and size concerns that, that probably need to be addressed in, in respect to that. But for the rural areas, minimum lot size 40,000 and larger, I think that this offers an additional opportunity to our residents to take advantage of alternative energy and do it in a manner that's a lot more cost-effective and has a more reasonable review and approval process to it.
Thank you. So you're suggesting our Exhibit A under item number six, the maximum blade rotor area diameter, or diameter should be?
Should be 24.
24?
Yes.
Rather than 12?
Rather than 12.
And we have, we're, we're considering this for recommendation, the city council. We're considering this for recommendation to city council, right? And previously, we considered that the vertical...
Yeah.
And I can't remember the precise...
Vertical axis wind turbines, much smaller.
Right.
Much shorter in terms of what they're allowed.
And those are typically in the urban or...
Correct. And as I've been duly informed by many people, not as efficient in terms of their use of wind and so forth.
No doubt. Okay.
We do have a speaker's card on this item.
All right, thank you. Okay.
Eli Sorkin.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner.
I didn't get your last name, say it.
Sorkin, S-O-R-K-I-N.
Sorkin. Welcome, sir, and thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to quickly shine some light on this current issue. There's a fairly old paradigm of what somebody thinks of in terms of a wind system. The example of the property adjacent to the freeway, these are fairly old types of systems. The new systems that are out in the market are monopole towers without a tail boom, which is kind of ubiquitous what everybody thinks of a wind turbine. In Lancaster, wind is an abundant, free energy source, and with new technology out there, it's possible for a fairly small-sized system to generate with the current winds about 5 to 700 kilowatt-hours a month, which is a substantial savings for a residential user. And because of this old paradigm, the opinions stated in the staff report, the two issues normally arise is noise and aesthetics, and the proposal is to limit it to 65 decibels. The new systems are actually 60 decibels, and as far as aesthetics, it is obviously a matter of personal taste. But I brought a video that would kind of describe what the new systems look like. And we live in an age where the electricity costs are going to continue to rise, and so it behooves us to consider these types of alternative energy sources such as solar and wind. One advantage that wind has over solar is that at night, solar doesn't work, but wind is actually sometimes stronger at night, so it's a 24-hour, 24/7 operation. So if you don't mind, I just wanted to show the video to kind of gauge the...
We'll see if our members would like to see it. Like to look at it?
It's about three minutes.
Sure? All right. How mu... How long?
Three.
Oh, great. Not 30, that's good.
No.
Thank you.
Then I can answer any questions.
They say we can't do anything about the weather. They're wrong. Because now there's Skystream, a residential wind generator that turns the wind into clean, safe, and affordable power for your home. Now you can create energy independence out of thin air. Designed to work in your own backyard, Skystream harnesses the free renewable resource of the wind and converts it into inexpensive electricity. It's quiet, efficient, and good for the environment. Best of all, it puts you in control of your own energy.
I was riding my bike around the area and I saw one in the neighbor's yard, and so I knocked on his door, talked to him about it, and he turned out to be installing, and we made a green trim and had it installed.
Number one, it's helping our electric bill. Number two, it's ecologically sound. And number three, it's just kind of a cool thing.
Utility costs constantly go up, but mine won't because it's going to offset my utility bill forever.
What I liked about the Skystream is the bottom line on your energy bill. You're saving from the beginning. You know, as soon as it's installed, it's turning and it's saving energy.
Skystream is a 2.4-kilowatt small wind generator that produces energy in very low Inside are the alternator, inverter, and sound isolators to reduce noise from being transmitted into the tower. Made for easy and simple installation, Skystream can be operational in just a few days.
The permitting installation of the Skystream was very easy. The contractor took care of everything and I really, as a homeowner, had to worry about nothing.
Our customers were very surprised how fast we could install from putting the tower together to the turbine spinning and creating electricity.
After it's installed, electricity travels from Skystream to the house via a 220-volt line that runs underground. Electricity goes through a safety disconnect switch into the main breaker box and into the house. Once it's connected, you're done. Nothing else changes inside your house.
We're paying zero for our electricity now and we have about 500 kilowatt-hours surplus at the moment.
I think I'm surprised that I'm producing as much electricity from it as I am.
When Skystream is producing power, your house automatically uses its power first. If you need more energy, it's drawn from the utility, so you're never without power, whether the wind's blowing or not. During sustained high winds, or when Skystream produces more energy than you need, excess power flows back into the utility, causing the electrical meter to spin backwards. This energy can then be used later when there's no wind, or received as a credit by the utility. You can even monitor your Skystream with special Skyview software, so you can see exactly how much electricity is being produced and how much energy you're saving every day.
Skystream is very user-friendly. You have a transmitter on the top and it can give you real-time data using just a wireless connection with your laptop and you can find out, you know, what the RPM is and what your kilowatt production is. You can record that and track it. A lot of good information coming out of the little antenna on the top of that unit. It's making power, it's reducing our electric bill, and we're hoping it's greening up the environment a little bit.
It helps us reduce our dependency on fossil fuel, and we make some clean electricity.
People are starting to think this way, think green. They're starting to consider the possibilities that individuals can do something.
This is alternative energy, practical enough to be a real alternative. And right now, U.S. residents are eligible for a 30% tax credit. This means that the entire cost of a Skystream system is reduced by 30%. Finally, energy independence has hit a turning point. So take control of your own energy. Harness the renewable resource that's in your own backyard. Talk to a dealer about Skystream and make wind work for you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right. Anyone have any questions? Have anyone? No? All right. So, no other speakers, Mr. Luticki?
No, no other cards.
All right, thank you. Then it'd be appropriate to close the public hearing without objection and consider a motion on this matter.
I move that we adopt resolution number 10-47 recommending to the city council approval of an amendment to the zoning ordinance Title 17 of the Lancaster Municipal Code.
Thank you. Have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved and seconded with the recommended amendment number six on the Exhibit A, right, to 24 feet?
That's correct.
That was your motion, I think, wasn't it, Mr. Hall?
That's correct.
Okay, good. All right, so, please vote.
Motion passes 7-0, and we will schedule this for an available city council meeting.
Very good, thank you. All right, director's announcements.
I have nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. On our commission agenda, well, there's a couple of things, and I won't belabor the point. There's, you know, four champions sitting up here tonight of the streets of Lancaster, and we had multiple participants representing our commission. Commissioner Hall and Commissioner Harvey and Commissioner Molly and Commissioner Torassiano. Now, the champion of all champions is Commissioner Torassiano, who beat everybody in sight in the commission race, nearly lapped the field. So... And I have a candid photo of his... Of him winning the trophy in a presentation of a nearly solid gold trophy. So we were well represented, and as we mentioned, this commission does rule. So thank you all for participating and representing us so well. Mr. Molly has an announcement to tell us about. There's been a new addition to his household. Are you going to share that with us, Raj?
Sure. I have just become a father of third child. She's a girl, and her name is Manna, and she was born on October 4th, and I'm very proud to have her.
I'm sure you are. On our agenda as well is the confirmation of the change of meeting dates of January 17th and January 21st, changing them to January 24th and February 28th due to the federal holidays. Martin Luther King Junior Day as well as President's Day holidays, right? Okay, very good. Anything else from the commission? No? All right. It's time for public business from the floor on non-agendized items. This portion of the agenda allows an individual the opportunity to address the commission on any subject regarding city business. Under state legislation, no action can be taken on non-agendized items. Members of the public should be aware of this when addressing the commission regarding items not specifically referenced on the agenda. If you haven't filled out a speaker's card, please do. For the recording secretary, individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. Do we have any non-agendized speakers?
I believe we did have one individual. She indicated non-agendized item as part of her other speaker's card.
Oh, okay, fine. Shall we? Ms. Williams is... Did you want to... Oh, please.
And thank you, and thank you.
Ms. Williams, right?
Yes, Lindy Wives.
All right, thank you.
I just want to tell everybody thank you again, because I know everybody wants to go home, I do too. I just wanted to say if... When you guys get a chance and you're making decisions, and you're making decisions in the neighborhood. I do live in the 10th Street West area. Sometimes it's called the mountain view, I think, or desert view, Mariposa, where the weed and seed program is, where basically we're told that the 9353 area code has the highest ailing population, whether it's seniors, disenfranchised, sometimes they call us transient, so on and so forth. We make less money than just everybody in the Antelope Valley. I bought my house when I was 30 years old. I had no idea. I was just happy I bought a house, man. So as I get older, I see things are different and they're difficult with the fact I don't have children, don't really have that kind of issue. But the concerns that I have is slowly but surely, it appears in the name of making things better. The powers that be are coming in and changing things and quote-unquote cleaning them up, which a lot of things have been very good. However, a lot of things are also detrimental. Rumor mail, I talked to a couple of people at the city, said that we're getting a potential 99 cent store, excuse me, Dollar Tree at the old Vaillant Market. If we, according to the senses, according to the Antelope Valley press, according to everything you can find revolving around the city, have the highest obesity, et cetera, et cetera, I do not understand why we need an additional store that sells Spam, soda, and Hot Cheetos. If anything, it would be great. I understand there's nothing that can be really done, but it would be nice to have a grocery store if you are to catch the bus. I have several forms of transportation, including a boat and a bicycle, so I'm going to be okay. But I look at my neighbors who are sometimes in wheelchairs, and if you catch a bus and you try to get, it's usually about a two-hour round trip, so now you can only carry six bags. With the fact that it's illegal to steal shopping carts, or now some of the ones have it where you can't take them anywhere, you have to decide, am I getting groceries, which are actually balanced mills, or am I getting Hot Pockets and Cheetos? If you guys can maybe think about that, and while you're at home, just drive through the neighborhood, hang out on a Friday night, hang out on a Saturday night. Come hang out with us. As opposed to sitting back, I understand a lot... We're appointed, elected, or however you came across it, but if you can just come down and take a look, because we're always told we don't care. And as we're told we don't care, some people start to believe that. And then the decisions that are made for us are done without us. So instead of it's great for the AV press, but it's $155 plus a year to subscribe, or $17 a month, that's my trash bill. I'm choosing to pay my trash bill. As far as Time Warner, it's one of the highest cables. There's only one station, Channel 3. If you have DirecTV or you're switching plans, which most of us do, because every six months or so, or whenever it changes, we call our friends, I have this now, give them my name, so on and so forth. If we could just use away by bus, DMV, or places that people go to get the information out, that would be great. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other speakers?
No, Mr. Chairman.
All right, then. Anything from the commission? No? All right, then. We stand adjourned until Monday, November 8th, 2010, at 5:30 p.m. here at City Hall in the planning large conference room. Thank you again for your participation this evening.